Good morning. Thank you, thank you. Good morning. Good morning. Oh, wasn't that nice? Good morning back. Just got to give them, make sure they're ready. All right, good morning. I'm calling us into session this morning. It is March 7th, 2023. And this morning, we will begin an executive session today for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding the following pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement and to hold consultation with attorney under section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, also personnel matters under section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code, and finally, commercial or financial information as it relates to economic development under section 551.087 of the Texas Government Code. We anticipate that we will be in executive session for quite a while this morning, then we will break for lunch, and then we will begin at 1:30 with a work session, and then our regular agenda will begin promptly at 2 o'clock. We are in recess. All right, good afternoon. I am going to speak heavily into this. Good afternoon. Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. All right, we, uh, city council is reconvening. It's 1:30, and we are reconvening into a work session. Uh, this will be the annual comprehensive financial report. Prior to that, I do not believe that we have any citizen comments on agenda item 2.2 only. If you are here, um, for our regular agenda or have a citizen comment on one of those agenda items, we will begin our regular agenda at 2:00 PM. Uh, but you're also welcome to stay for this tantalizing presentation over the annual comprehensive financial report. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Kostalich.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad it's just going to be tantalizing. Uh, first, I want to acknowledge, before we start this presentation, I want to acknowledge the people that really do the hard work behind this, and that's our, our accounting team. The, the leadership is here, the director, Linda Cuellar, and our accounting managers, Veronica Valderez and Brack Bullock. So, uh, thank them for all their work. The, the annual comprehensive financial report, the ACFER, uh, as we like to call it, contains a tremendous amount of financial information, covering every aspect of, of the city's operations. So it's, it is extremely transparent in everything that we do. Uh, there is absolutely way too much to go into, uh, to cover everything today. You're welcome, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Uh, so today's presentation is really going to focus on, uh, a, the audit insights from our partner at Weaver, the external auditors, then I'll, I'll highlight some of the more major fund operations on the financial side. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Ripka.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Um, I'll keep this as brief as possible. Um, I'll go through some introductions. This is just a little bit of information about the firm itself for you all to read at your leisure. Um, my name is Jennifer Ripka, and I'm the engagement partner. I have 16 years of experience. Um, I'm a member of the GFOA Special Review Committee, and I have a lot of experience working auditing and consulting with cities, school districts, and special purpose governments across the state. And this is our audit team. Myself is the lead. We do have a technical review partner that also looks at, um, the work papers as well as the ACFER. Um, we also utilize a IT advisory partner on this engagement, as well as a data analytics, um, senior manager that are outside of the audit themselves, but do assist. Um, Bryant Sanchez is the manager on this engagement. Chris Walker is the senior associate, and so he's the one who leads our audit associates and supporting staff onsite. The audit process, we start out with our initial audit planning. Um, that's going to be different every single year depending on the changes that occur during the fiscal year. We do our interim fieldwork during September. Um, we meet with the audit committee in November to go through any changes, um, that they would like to see and where we are from an interim standpoint. And then we come back out for final fieldwork. That's when we're testing the bulk of, um, the financial statement information. Um, come back in February to present to the audit committee the final results, and then here, um, to present the final report to you all. Then we start the process all over again. We perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as generally accepted government auditing standards. And we also perform a single audit here at the city that's over federal and state financial assistance. And we do compliance testing outside of that federal and state financial assistance, and that's going to be over, um, different laws, regulations, contracts, grant agreements, et cetera. The Public Funds Investment Act is also included in there. We also do the passenger facility charges, um, audits, and so that's under compliance audit as well. For the most important piece, the audit results over the financial statements, we've issued an unmodified opinion. That's a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that can be placed on a set of financial statements. Um, as part of our audit, we do review internal controls over financial reporting. Um, we did not have any material weaknesses. We did have one significant deficiency, and I'll go through that on the next slide. Um, but we did not have any non-compliance, um, with regards to those laws, regulations, PFI, et cetera. Um, well, before that, we, um, did implement a new standard this year, GASB-87. That's the lease standard. And so when you're looking at the financial statements, you'll notice that there are lessor agreements, as well as lessee agreements that have been placed on the, the financial statements. So, um, there's a right to use asset, um, as well as a lease receivable associated with these agreements, and that's new this year. The prior period restatement, so this is the significant deficiency. Um, so during the course of the year, it was brought to the city's attention, um, that there were some non-cash contributions that were not, um, included in the prior year's audited financial statements that should have been. Um, this is the criteria condition, the cause, the effect, and then our recommendation. Um, with regards to this, um, every city across, across the state is receiving developer contributions. Um, when those assets are accepted by the city, they're required to be placed on the city's financial statements. Again, it's not a cash transaction, so you are, you know, relying on engineering to provide that information from a financial standpoint so that it can get placed on the, um, financial statements. Um, there was a cutoff issue, and so that's what required the, um, internal control deficiency that's listed. As far as the federal awards and, um, state awards, we also, also issued an opinion on compliance with regards to the compliance requirements over those federal and state financial assistance. Um, that was an unmodified opinion. Again, it's a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that can be placed on, um, on compliance. You all are a low-risk auditee. Um, that just means that there's been unmodified opinions. There haven't been any material weaknesses, and you've been audited in the past, um, two fiscal years. There were no material weaknesses in, um, the internal controls over these major programs that we tested, um, no significant deficiencies, and then no audit findings that are required to be reported. The federal programs that we tested are listed below. Several programs, you, you all receive a lot of federal, um, funding, and so that requires a lot of programs to be tested. State funding, same scenario, unmodified opinion, low-risk auditee, um, no internal control issues from a material weakness or a significant deficiency standpoint, um, no non-compliance that's required to be, um, reported to the state. And then the state program was 5307 funds. And so that's transit funding. Audit results, um, there are areas that are higher risk. Utility billing is one of those. Um, we did do an analysis, a sample of 40 utility bills. We noted no issues associated with those. And we compared utility billings by customer for the past two years. Um, we did find some instances where it arose where we need to further investigate those. Um, that doesn't mean that there's an issue. It just was outliers. So, when we look at outliers, we go back to figure out whether or not the outlier is, appears to be reasonable, which we did. There were no issues associated with those upon further review. Um, we reviewed material journal entries, noting all of those were supported. Um, grant funding, again, you all receive a lot of grant funding, and that requires us to look at a lot of grant receipts, ensure that there is, um, proper cutoff from a revenue recognition standpoint. All of those were properly supported and, um, recognized in the proper period. And then from a financial reporting standpoint, um, to look at management override, we're looking for unusual journal entries, um, payments to unusual vendors. You all would be reviewed. Your names would be looked at to see if there were any cash disbursements to any of you. Um, also, normal credit balances that had debit, um, information, as well as vice versa. Any, um, transfers between funds that appeared to be outside of the normal course of business, et cetera. Um, we looked for those types of issues. We didn't identify any that, um, didn't have any support. With that, I will turn it over to you, Blue.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. So, jumping, uh, right into the financial results of this, we're going to start first with our general fund, probably the most basic, uh, fund for the city and what many people think of as the core governmental services for a city. Uh, that's kind of your fire, your police, streets, uh, public health, uh, parks, and, and really overall, general administrative. Uh, so if we, if we start with the overall budgetary performance, uh, you're going to see that our, uh, revenues did jump up quite a bit, as well as our expenses, ending the year with 263.1 million in revenues against 264.5 million of expenses. Uh, these increases, uh, in the revenues of about $18 million are primarily from a $12 million, uh, overage in sales tax compared to the prior year. So that's where the bulk of that is. You also have increases in, um, some other franchise fees and, and development, uh, and building permit fees. Then on the expense side, an increase of about $32 million. I'll go further into, uh, expenses on the next slide. Uh, but overall, if you look, the annual growth rate on a, on a raw dollar basis, uh, for the last five years is, is 4.6% on revenues, 4.5% on expenses. Now, I want to bring your attention to the bottom slide. This is where we do a little bit of adjustment to this because the, the, the top number is good to look at the raw numbers, but when you're looking at this and comparing and seeing what's really happening on your revenues and expenses, we really have to, to be cautious about doing the, the top graph on the raw numbers, uh, because that, that top graph is assuming that the city of Lubbock is, is stagnant. It, it's a static, uh, look at the city across time. We know that's not true here in the city of Lubbock. We have a lot of population and land area growth, and we also know that the time value of money changes based upon inflation. So, um, therefore, to get an accurate comparison of the city's operations, we adjust to a per capita inflation adjusted basis to get a true sense of what's happening year over year. And that's where the story changes quite a bit for us. Uh, if you'll look, the average growth rate, uh, for revenues goes down to 0.8% against expenses on a five-year annual growth rate of 0.7%. So breaking this, uh, expenses down into categories and raw numbers, again, uh, you're going to see that the, the largest category is two of them, uh, in public safety and then transfers out. Uh, but again, if you adjust for, um, adjust for the, uh, per capita spending inflation adjusted, uh, tells a whole different story. What you really see down here is, um, precisely what the city has been trying to do over the last few years. First and foremost, get lean in our operations, become way more efficient with the dollars that we, we receive. Uh, but two, you see the one that's really, uh, coming up in transfers, uh, is transfers out. And, and that is our effort to start cash funding capital projects and using some of those excess reserves that we have above policy to put back to one-time capital spend, uh, to, to better the, the city as a whole. Couple of ratios that are important to the general fund that we look at. Uh, fund balance and fund balance as a percent of, uh, expenses is, uh, they're, those are both useful indicators for the overall, uh, city financial health. Uh, we ended fiscal year '22 slightly up with 89.2 million dollars of unassigned fund balance, uh, which, uh, brings us to a, uh, fund balance as a percentage of expenses up to 40.4%. That's, that's almost double, uh, that, that policy level that we have. Now, I do want to highlight, this fund balance as a percent of expenditures and, and the fund balance as a whole, unassigned fund balance is very different than what we talk about during budget. It's a very different metric. This is not excess reserves. This is just fund balance, uh, that we have. And on the bottom, the current ratio, this is a measure of our liquidity, so the ability for, uh, our assets to cover our liabilities. So, uh, if you look at fiscal year '22, ending with a, uh, ratio of 8.06, uh, that means for every $1 of liabilities that the city has, we have $8.06 of assets to cover that $1 of liability. So extremely liquid, uh, very good financial position to be in. All right, we're going to move to the major enterprise funds. These are, these are what we typically think of as our business-type funds. Uh, this is where the, the, uh, revenues from those systems come from the, the, uh, usage of those systems. You think your water, your wastewater, your stormwater, those where you're paying a fee to actually use those services. And, uh, conversely, the, the expenses in those are directly tied, uh, to the operations of that system. So we're going to start first with Lubbock Power and Light, our electric fund. Uh, overall, you see a, a sharp increase in revenues and expenses. Uh, revenues up to 341.4 million, uh, against expenses of 315.3 million. Uh, the revenue increases, 52 million of that is the, the higher cost of natural gas. We had a large spike in that. And the way that the, uh, that LPNL works with the power cost recovery factor is whatever they spend, whatever LPNL spends to buy and purchase that electricity is just a simple pass-through. So that's why you're going to see your expenses on a one-for-one basis increase. Uh, on the revenue side as well, you have an increase in the, what's called the transmission cost of, uh, service, T-cost revenues. Uh, that's the, the, uh, standardized dollars that come back, uh, to us from ERCOT, uh, for being able to use our transmission lines to, uh, to transmit electricity. Uh, so additional revenue stream that's now starting to come in. Uh, last year, we only had four months. This year, we had 12 months of T-cost revenues. That's why you're going to see an, an increase of about $28 million, uh, in revenue in LPNL. Uh, as a note, and I do want to point this out because this will... Oh, as a note, I'm sorry. Uh, I do want to point out that, uh, when you're looking at these expenses, the way GAAP and GASB work is the, the bond principal payments are not classified as expenses. So when you look at this, you, you, you see a, quite a higher revenue than expense, and you'll see this on the next two funds as well. Uh, that's because the, the principal payments on bonds is not included in, in the, uh, the expenses on the income statement. So, just to put that in, into perspective, LPNL had, uh, $20 million in principal bond payments, so if you add that on to the 315, uh, you get more of a, a balanced account. On the bottom, you're going to see the fund balance as a percent of expenses, uh, well below policy right now, uh, starting with that dip in fiscal year '21 and into '22. This is related to their, uh, cash outflows in order to build the capital, uh, build the infrastructure that they need, uh, for that transition into ERCOT. This is below policy right now, but we're not really concerned with that at this point because they're transitioning their, their business model into being a wires-only company, getting out of the retail electric. So, once that transition fully happens, all of these, uh, metrics that you're going to see on this page and, and the next are going to come back in line. So, uh, going on to the next page with the, the cash and investments, like I said, that, that's the drawdown for all those, uh, infrastructure projects, uh, which has a corresponding effect on the day's cash on hand, uh, following, below the 90-day level, but really where, where the ideal is at 150 days. Uh, again, once we're out of the, uh, the retail market, uh, these metrics will come back up. Going on to the water and wastewater fund, uh, increases in revenue, uh, really as our result of the, uh, the growth in the system as a whole. Uh, we did not have any rate increases on this, so this is all pure organic growth, uh, in the system. Uh, and also, there was a, an increase in the, uh, daily water usage, up from, uh, 34, or 34.5 million gallons per day, up to 37.1 million gallons per day. So the decrease in the expenses, though, came, uh, from efficiency across the system. There was no one category that was just, uh, completely out of line with any others. So the expenses really happened across the system as a whole. And again, on the expense side, there were, uh, $41 million of, uh, bond principal payments. They're not included in that number. So once you add that back in, again, your revenues and expenses are, are much more balanced. The fund balance as a percent of expenditures, uh, came slightly up to 32.6. That was off of a low of 26.4, still above the 25% policy limit that we have. Uh, still a very healthy system. Uh, this has been the result of, over the last few years, using a lot of that excess cash and excess reserves, uh, for capital projects. So that's what you see is that drawdown, uh, more to the policy level. Couple of the, uh, metrics that are important for our, for our credit rating, and, uh, I just want to mention that, uh, over this past year, the, the water and wastewater system was upgraded by both Standard and Poor's and Fitch, uh, to a solid AA. Was it AA minus on both of those? So, uh, the metrics are improving. They're seeing that, and, and we're being rewarded through the, uh, through the ratings on that. So the first is the debt service coverage ratio. That's the measurement of the system's ability to cash flow, uh, the, the available cash flow to pay for the current debt obligations. So at, at 1.55 debt, uh, debt service coverage ratio, that means for every $1 of debt that's out there, the system has a cash flow of $1.55 in order to pay for that. Uh, 1.25 is generally the absolute lowest you want to go, uh, on these without having to have some type of reserve account set aside for debt. Uh, so we want to stay above, or stay above that, but really we want to get to that 1.6 level, and that's where, uh, the solid AA credits are. Uh, and then, uh, fully believe that two, two times is a little high. That's way too much to be carrying, uh, when it could be going back into the system. But, but two is the standard for a AAA. And then on the bottom, the debt to capital ratio. Uh, the debt to capital ratio is a measurement, uh, really of the utilities, uh, leverage, uh, financial leverage. Uh, essentially shows a breakdown of the system's debt to the overall capital of, of that system. Anything, uh, in a healthy system is really below 50%. We've worked really hard over the last few years. We've got it down, uh, to 41.3%. Uh, some of the most healthy systems that you'll see in the, the credit ratings really have a 35% of debt to, to 65% capital. So, uh, eventually, we'll be, we'll be working our way towards that. All right, on the stormwater fund, uh, again, no, no rate change in this. The operating, uh, revenue from the system really did not change all that much. Uh, the decrease that you're going to see is related to, uh, a drop in the amount of capital contributions that came into the system. Um, expenses, uh, were decreasing primarily to a decrease in the transfers out to other funds, uh, so, but still, uh, very, very little change in this. Um, and for the, for the final piece, like I said on the last, uh, couple of, of funds, the, uh, debt payment, principal bond payment was not included, is, is not included in the, uh, expenses and transfers out, uh, which that was about $9 million. So, uh, adding $9 million back up onto that, that, that brings you up to about $24, $25 million on expenses. And finally, I'll end, uh, this portion with the, uh, the airport, the Preston Smith International Airport Airport Fund. Uh, the decrease in revenues, uh, you're going to see a sharp decrease from 28.7 to 19.2. A lot of that is, is back, getting back to normal operations for, for the airport fund. This is a drop in, in capital grants. Uh, there were a lot of, uh, COVID-related grants that came in over the last couple of years, uh, but those are starting to fall off. Expenses for the airport, uh, decreased against all, uh, against all, uh, expense categories, uh, resulting in a decrease of about $3 million in their overall operations. But they are still, uh, in, in terms of a fund balance, well above their, their policy limit of 25%. All right. Couple more. Talk about the, the overall, uh, debt profile of the city of Lubbock. Total principal and interest, as of the end of fiscal year '22, was about $1.8 billion. Uh, most of that, about 69%, is housed within Lubbock Power and Light and the Water and Wastewater Fund. A lot of these have been large capital, uh, projects that have happened, uh, for the city as a whole. Uh, but those, those are the two largest categories of, of our debt. And then you'll see the third at 257.4 million is the general fund. That is the portion that is really your property tax-backed debt. Uh, so overall, the user fee-supported debt, uh, for the city of Lubbock, out of that 1.8 billion, 83, almost 84% of that is user fee-supported. Only 16% of that 1.8 is actually property tax-backed debt. And then, ending with our pensions and OPEB, uh, overall, really good news here on, on the TMR side. Very, very well-funded plan, up to almost 96% funded, so, uh, extremely healthy on that. The pension, uh, Lubbock Fire Pension Fund has been increasing over the last few years. Uh, significant improvement has been made, almost up to 80% on that one. Uh, that 80% is even including, uh, starting to, to wind down our assumed rate of return on that. It was seven and three-quarter percent. Uh, we've been able to back that down and to, uh, seven and a half percent in 2021. And as, uh, we get the opportunity to, the Lubbock Fire Pension Fund, the board is, is trying to continue to work that down even further. Um, but we're having to, uh, manage that reduction in the assumed rate of return with the amortization life of that plan based upon what's, what we're getting back from the Pension Review Board, uh, here in the state of Texas. Now, our OPEB liability has decreased. It, we saw a quick jump in 2021 up to 172 million, uh, and that has come back down, uh, due, due to some different, uh, returns and, uh, discount rates, down to almost 155 million. Mayor, Council, in there and take any questions as you have?
Ms. Joy has a quick question. I didn't...
Uh, for everyone, what does the acronym OPEB stand for?
Yes, ma'am, you're right. Uh, I, I tried to do that, the resident, just, other post-employment benefits. So it's retiree health insurance.
Okay. And, I don't know if everyone understands that there are, when someone leaves the city of Lubbock, there are benefits that go with them, and it's all reflected in this number. At one time, this was not reflected, uh, on our statements. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. It was not.
Uh, the other question I had, you mentioned back on, um, on the city, um, issues that there, for every $1, there, there was about $8 of, uh, of assets. What do you define assets to be? Because to me, it's different if you're talking about a fund, a money, plus, uh, on the other hand, you know, equipment, that sort of thing.
Right. It, it does not, yes, ma'am. Uh, the assets are, are typically called liquid assets. They're your, your cash, cash equivalents, and your investments. Those are the three.
Okay.
Liquid assets, yes.
Okay. On LPNL, uh, clearly on that chart, it's below, uh, policy limits, and those policy limits are set by the charter, are they not?
They, they are, yes. They have a 24% in, in the charter.
So, uh, you're telling us right now they're below. When can we expect those to get back into compliance?
I would expect as soon as they make the transition away from, uh, the retail electric, uh, being a, like, retail electric provider, uh, a lot of those revenues and expenses shift, and they will come back up. They have the cash, but their, their, their expenses will, will decrease significantly.
It always bothers me when we're not in compliance, okay?
Understand, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Blue, is this, uh, and I'm also going to slide 24. Is this ma, you know, especially 2021, we're at 13 and a half. That's almost half of the required balance. Is this because of the transition? Is this related to the ERCOT transition? A few more details?
It, it's related to. It's, it's a drawdown. Um, so you had a lot of expenses that, um, LPNL has had over the last few years, building out all the infrastructure, all the transmission lines and everything, uh, in order to, to make that transition to ERCOT.
And then secondly, again, Trail's stealing my questions, looking at my notes. Uh, on slide 22, on slide 22, this eight-to-one ratio, give that in layman terms, because that's, that's really good. That's a really good situation we're in right now.
That is.
I mean, that's fantastic for the, especially in the general fund, for the people to understand. We're at an eight-to-one ratio, and that current ratio is fantastic.
That is, yes.
Is there any way you can pare that down to common layman terms, other than, we're at eight-to-one ratio?
Well, Mayor, like, like I said, I, the, the example that I gave was, was $1 of liabilities, $8 of basically cash in hand to, to cover that $1. So you've got $7 left over. Uh, that, I don't know how much more I can do.
All right, fair enough. You can buy two cokes with that.
You can buy two cokes instead of one.
All right, Mr. McBrier, I recognize you, sir.
Again, point of explanation, I think most people, if they're listening to this, would understand what revenues and expenses are. What are transfers in and transfers out?
Transfers in and out can be a multitude of things, but a lot of times, say in your enterprise funds, there's administrative functions that happen in the general fund, so there's an indirect cost allocation for those services, like legal, city secretary, things of those sort that the entire city uses. So you'll have that indirect allocation cost that is considered transfer. You'll also have transfers for debt service. So say, we have self-supporting debt in the stormwater fund that is actually paid out of one big debt service fund. They transfer their dollars over to that debt service fund in order to pay out of one fund.
So there's a question, there are transfers between funds?
There are transfers between funds, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kostlich.
Sure.
Oh, Ms. Joy has another question.
For the auditor. I understand that we've always, not always, but that we now, on our audits, have to include all the debt. Why was the less or less C information added in this particular year?
Yeah, GASB 87 became effective this year, excuse me. So GASB is the standards board that the city has to follow, and they're really just piggybacking off of public and private companies. So that was coming due for, you know, just your average commercial, you know, company out in the world, and so GASB piggybacked off of that, and so it was required for the city as well. It's really, I mean, that every city across the state is going to have to implement this year.
I guess I was looking for the rationale.
For doing that, you would have to ask GASB, to be honest. I mean, it's really trying to bring it back to more of a cash basis, which, you know, previously, it would have been straight-lined over, and then GASB came through and said, we would rather it be more in line with the cash basis. So that was really there.
Who is GASB?
It's the Standards Boards for Governments.
Called the Great GASB.
What's the acronym for?
Government Accounting Standards Board. And if I might jump in just a little, Mayor, what Jennifer's talking about, Ms. Joy, you mentioned the OPEB liability that didn't used to be on the statements, and it is now. That is also commonly found, and found for years, on the statements for a publicly-held corporation, a private entity. Same thing with the leases. It is something that has been kind of below the line on governmental statements for a long time. GASB continues an effort to make the government statements look more and more like what you would find with any other business. Really, it's a change to us, but it truly makes our statements as a governmental body look more like what anybody that's used to reading financial statements could read. Get the total picture.
So it applies to governmental bodies, that you can say that, right?
Should.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thanks.
Mr. Atkinson, did you have another comment? All right, well done, guys. We appreciate you very much. Thanks for being here, Jennifer. All right, we're going to move into our 2:00 PM. We will convene into our open session and move from work session into our regular agenda. And first, we will begin with our ceremonial items. We will first start with our invocation, and then immediately, as I ask you to stand, we'll have our invocation, and we'll move immediately to our pledges. And today, we have Preaching Minister Dale Mannan from Green Lawn Church of Christ with us today. Dale, you can come on forward, sir, and just, if you'll just stay there and remain standing, and we'll move into their pledges.
All right.
Thank you very much for being here.
Let's pray. Father, it's a wonderful privilege to speak to the Creator of the universe, to be simple human beings who are in desperate need of guidance and leading. We're thankful that you make access to you available. Father, we're thankful to live in the city that we do. We're thankful for the quality of people, the quality of healthcare, the quality of life that we enjoy here in West Texas. And I pray, Father, that you will continue to direct our mayor and the council with wisdom so that they can continue to protect and enhance our way of life. And I pray, Father, that our way of life will bring honor and glory to you. So may you bless this proceeding, and may it lead to lives that recognize and honor your glory and goodness. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Would you remain standing and join us in our pledge to the United States and Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, Pastor, for being with us today. All right, we will next move to citizen comments. This is Agenda Item Four. According to local rules, any citizen wishing to appear in person before a meeting of the city council may do so and complete a sign-up form no later than 2:00 PM. So provide them an opportunity to make comments and express a position on an agenda item. So if you've signed up, if you'll please step forward when your name is called, state your name, your address, and which agenda item you're commenting on. And you'll have three minutes to make a statement. You will hear a nice little bell by Jimmy over there if it goes over, when you get to two and a half minutes. And we'll first start with Mr. Joshua Schankels.
Good afternoon, Council. Joshua Schankels, I live in the 2600 block of 47th Street, and I'm also a member of the governing board of Lubbock Compact Foundation. And I'm addressing Item 635. I come before you today to speak generally in favor of Item 6.35 regarding the proposed veteran cemetery. Having a place to honor those who have shown the highest levels of sacrifice and patriotism with their military service is a demonstration of our city's character and values, and it is something that I, my organization, and I'm certain many others support completely. However, the current unavoidable problem here isn't the veteran cemetery. The problem is what will be the cemetery's neighbors. The proposed site for this solemn place of honor is a half-mile downwind of Lubbock's only feedlot, a place with a well-known reputation for spreading a miasma of noxious odor and airborne particulates that extends well beyond the bounds of the feedlot itself, and undoubtedly will do so to the site in question here. As you all well know, we currently have no mechanism by which conflicting and incompatible land uses can be resolved. Years-long efforts to advocate for such a policy have been met with a frustrating and nonsensical series of attempts by previous councils to wear out community advocates and thwart their attempts to secure necessary policy tools with bad-faced gestures, time-wasting commands to deliver evidence that, when delivered, was met with a roundabout response of, well, not that evidence, outright dishonesty, and gainsaying of the testimonials of those impacted by the effects of polluting neighbors. And with respect to this site, or with respect to the conflicting use we're now proposing to set up here, this was something previous councils were warned would come up again in the future as our city grew and changed, and was all the more reason to have policy mechanisms in place to resolve. Notwithstanding that this feedlot and its holding ponds for waste will be perched right above the location of Canyon Lake 7, our city's now and future water source, and an important future location for recreation, a fact that should be compelling enough a reason to act in its own right because of the risks it poses to the same, now, we intend to set aside a site for ceremonial burials of our honored dead directly downwind of one of Lubbock's most substantial polluters. We propose for grieving families and dignitaries to lay their loved ones to rest, to have to do so in a cloud of agricultural byproducts. I, for one, can think of no more offensive conditions under which this place of honor should exist. So, the question before this council is, will this proposal cause us to finally act to create policy mechanisms by which the conflicting uses and unreasonable conditions can be resolved in the future, and thus protect our residents, guests, and, in this case, Sacred Memorial?
Thank you, Mr. Schankels.
Thank you.
All right, we next have Mr. John Shipley.
Thank you, council members, for allowing me to speak. My name is John Shipley. I live at 804 West 7th, Idalou, Texas. I am a retired Army veteran. I support the veteran cemetery. However, the chosen location is not ideal for a burial cemetery. Veterans deserve better than their final resting place is a sewage field. Yes, I know the field has been taken out of service for the last few years, but adjacent are areas that remain gray farms, sewage fields. Kyle Chris, or Chris Kyle, was buried at the Texas Cemetery. It is not a sewage field. Arlington is not a gray farm. The Punchbowl Cemetery in Hawaii is not directly north of a feedlot. Our veterans deserve treatment that is honorable and respectful. If they are willing to serve, and at least we can do is offer them a dignified place to rest. I asked several veterans that I come across their thoughts. The ones that I've asked do not believe this is an appropriate place for a veteran cemetery. We take the time to fly veterans to Washington for the honor flights, to see the monuments built in their honor, their service, and sacrifice. They visit the tomb of the unknown soldier, a solemn place. How can we bury men like that in a gray farm? I say it's not an honorable place to bury veterans. Vietnam veterans fought in rice paddies where their, where rice paddies were treated with human waste. Now, we ask their families to bury them in a place that is no better. I'm sure you have family members who have served in the military or currently serving our country. Is this a place that you would choose for their final resting place? The men and women behind me, I wouldn't bury them there. I understand the city is not building this. Please do not allow anyone to build a veteran cemetery on a gray farm. Remember, your name will be on it. I ask you not to donate this land for the purpose of a veteran cemetery. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. All right, next, we will move to Agenda Item Number Four, or excuse me, Five, which is Minutes. We have the Minutes from the February 14th of 2023 regular city council meeting. I have a motion to approve. Thank you, Ms. Martines Garcia. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. I have a motion in a second to approve Agenda Item 5.1. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, by like sign. Our motion carries 7-0. Next, we will move to the Consent Agenda. Council, it's my understanding that Agenda Item 6.28 has been removed, so if you would mark through that, that's been taken off and will be added to May, later, later, Agenda. We do have one pool, and that is Agenda Item 6.35. And with that, I'll start off with you, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind switching our inputs, we've got just a couple of quick graphics to show today. Get those to come up. Thank you. So to begin, Council, as you're well aware, the proposed veteran cemetery in Lubbock, Texas, is a partnership project that has been something we've worked on now diligently for a little better than two years. It's been somewhat typical of projects that involve other funding agencies. It speeds up, it slows down. Would tell you that where you sit today, it has not just sped up, it has two feet on the gas pedal. The way this project will work, the federal government, through the Veterans Affairs Administration, provides the funding to construct veteran cemeteries all across the United States and its territories. That funding is what you saw the recent announcements of. So this is a $9.5 million, what they call grant offer, and the offer is to the state of Texas. So in the state of Texas, it is the Texas Veterans Land Board, and they have a group in charge of the state veterans' cemeteries. Dollars from the federal government to the state government. The city of Lubbock comes in, because to even become eligible, somebody, a city, a county, a private party, somebody has to provide the acreage, and it has to be provided to the project free of charge. The image that you see up on your screens right there is 100 acres of city-owned land. The council, last April, April of 2022, offered a resolution of donation to the Texas Veterans Land Board that said, if you can secure the funding and construct a cemetery, the city of Lubbock will donate the land. So that is our agenda item today, which is merely the approval of authority to execute and to make that transfer happen. I said the project was moving fast and two feet on the gas. Last week, we had representatives of the Lubbock City Council, the Federal Veteran Cemetery Organization, Texas Veterans Land Board, and a couple of City of Lubbock employees to begin looking at what were the concepts and what are the steps that we must complete. Council, there is the initial concept. Now, the entirety of that will not be built in Phase One, it will be multiple phases, but that is the concept, and I think it's important, where is that? The driveway that you see on the left-hand side of that screen, that is six tenths of a mile from the East Loop and 50th. It is a very accessible location. It fits, as was mentioned earlier, into future plans. So you see the red hashed area, that is your 100 acres, and that is the overlay of the future Lake 7 that goes with it. This part is entirely up on the flat. This project will continue to go quickly. There are some timelines that must be met. The most significant ones of them occur in August. Those are for the Veterans Land Board. What you will see from the city, should you approve this item today, we will immediately begin the process, number one, of annexing this land. It needs to be pulled into the city limits, and we will have that back in front of you as we go forward. There's some minor work on the site. There's a couple of old agricultural wells that we have agreed we will plug, take them out of the system, get them over there for them to use. It will get pretty hot and heavy as we approach May. That's when we'll get ready to do the final transfers. And then by midsummer, you will see the state of Texas, through the Texas Veterans Land Board, actually go out to bid. So it's going to go fast, it's going to be good. Councilman Massengale has led our efforts for that, and Mayor, I would stop for a moment if you'd like.
Mr. Atkinson, briefly, I know this was, I guess, awarded in April of 2022 before four of us came on. We've heard a couple of objections to this site, and y'all have met with federal authorities, as well as state authorities, that do this all over the country. Was there any statements or any objections from any of those parties that are involved in this process as to this location? And why this would, explain why this would be a good location, and what we think it looks like in the future in light of where the lake will be?
Certainly. Probably the best way, the simplest way to answer your question is no. There have been no reservations, there have been no concerns expressed either by the federal or the state government. Environmental assessment has been done on the property. It's been done not by the city of Lubbock and turned over, but by the state of Texas. There are no lingering issues or concerns on the property. Why is this property appropriate to do this? When we started this project two years ago, we identified three of these 100-acre parcels. At the time, Lubbock had five generals, retired generals, very active. We had our group that you see out here in the audience today that were very active. I believe I saw Eddie McBride come in from the chamber, a former chamber executive who was also very active in it. And we spent days out demonstrating, looking, checking out all those sites. This site was unanimously chosen, not by me or my staff, not by Councilman Massengale or the council, but by that collective group. Since then, since last April, actually, it has been on the state's radar. They have been on it multiple times, again, an environmental assessment. There are no issues with the property. There are no issues with the property. It will be the key entry in front of where you will eventually turn into your future Lake Seven. It sits on the flat, and as you saw from the map a moment ago, it looks right down into that future gem that will be built for Lubbock.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Mr. Massengale?
Thank you, Mayor. Today is an exciting day. When we got notice a little over a week ago, I mean, two or three days prior to that, matter of fact, Ms. Joy was, we were working on this in our state Capitol. Mr. Atkinson, I think we've been working on it for longer than three years. I mean, longer than two years. But I'll just take you back. I got a call from a friend of mine, General Edgar Murphy, at the time, and I had been elected to council for not too long, and he, he shared his vision with me. The late General Edgar Murphy, his wife is here, Anne's here, family friend, General Metameyer's wife is here, Mary Beth, General Harbor is here, all of which were involved in that. And we have a large population of under, what we call underserved veterans, as we consider where families would bury their loved ones, those that have served and fought for freedom and liberty. And it's, Lubbock's in a real good place, and having dedicated the land was the, was the leverage that we needed for the federal government and the state government to buy into our concept. Let me just thank a few people, and I'll pass the mic. I mentioned the generals. It's their vision, and they're the ones that started the process. I want to thank Danny Koch. Danny was very pivotal in everything we did. If you see Senator Charles Perry, you need to thank Senator Perry. He played a vital role in this. Eddie McBride, Commissioner Don Buckingham, from the state land office, Dr. John Kelly, who is our contact with the Veterans Land Board, and Congressman Jody Arrington was very pivotal in securing this project. Mr. Atkinson's right, we have a grant opportunity. We've been given a list of things to do prior to 30 September, which we intend to get every one of them done. So I'm thankful for our veterans, and for their families, and for the opportunity this presents.
Thank you, Mr. Massengale. And I know when you're coming up with thanks and people to thank on the fly, it's hard, but we also want to thank our state reps on appropriations and on calendars who got this moving very quickly for us, Dustin Burrows and Carl Tepper, that also, all of our delegation worked very hard on this, very quickly to get this moving. And I'll say thanks to Steve as well. I know, and Latrell and Sheila have been on this, working on this the last several years. This is one of the first things they talked about when I, when I was elected. It's very important to them, very important to our community, and so thank you for all of your hard work that you three did on this. We've still got some work to do. I'll recognize Ms. Martinez Garcia.
And no doubt that the local veteran organizations, the VFW, the South Plains Chapter of the Purple Hearts, and various others have been very significant. I think, I don't see Benny Guerrero in the audience, but I know, that's right. But he also was very instrumental in these efforts. So we want to thank all the local veteran organizations and their advocates, including Steve and the other council members. Thank you for your vision.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. All right, council, if I have approval of all of you, we will move 6.28 out, and we will pull 6.35 in and vote collectively on 6.1 through 6.35 exclusive of 6.28. If I have a motion to approve? Thank you, thank you, I can't, I didn't hear it down here. Mr. Massengale, I get a second from someone? Ms. Martinez Garcia, thank you for the second. All in favor of approval of the 6.1 through 6.35 exclusive of 6.28, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign? Consent agenda carries 7-0. If you are here on behalf of agenda item 6.35, if you'd please just stand up, we'd like to recognize you all. We'll give you a round. Thank you for your service. I know many of you stood up, and it took a minute to get up, and I think my back is older than most of yours. We do appreciate you all being here today and serving in our community. It's, it's very important, as I said, part of our community. Next, we will move to our regular agenda. You would all like to stay here for these public hearings, you're more than welcome to. If you'd like to, if you, if you'd like to go ahead and vomit nose, you're also welcome to do that. We're going to be in recess, council, for three to five minutes. All right, we are back in session, and we will begin with our regular agenda. First of all, we will have 7.1. This is a, actually a request by SPS for us to not deny their application of intent and application for authority to change rates. Is that correct, Mr. Atkinson?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct. This is about, occurs about every other year, when Southwestern Public Service Company files to change its rates. We are part of the group they ask to deny. Why? There are two total customers of Southwestern Public Service Companies that are in this city council's jurisdiction. Suggest that you hold the public hearing, and council, if you find favor with it, deny their application. That puts it into a period of time during which they will negotiate with the other jurisdictions and entities where the majority of their customers are located. Again, you have two. You have two total customers.
All right, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. All right, this time, council will hold a public hearing on a proposed statement of intent and application to change rates filed by SPS Company. At this time, we will open the public hearing. If there are anyone who wishes to speak at this public hearing, you may step forward now. Seeing as we only have city employees present. Ah, Wes, honorary city employee. He's still here, folks. Can't get away from you all. And seeing none, I will now close the public hearing, and then I would entertain a motion to approve a resolution to deny the application of SPS. All right, I have a move to deny the resolution by Ms. Joy, and a second by Ms. Patterson-Harris. All in favor of denying the resolution and application of SPS, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, by like sign? Our motion to deny the application carries 7-0. All right, we will now next move to item 7.2. Item 7.2 is a public hearing to consider the creation of the Upland Crossing 2, which is a public improvement district. This public hearing is required by the Texas Local Government Code. And before I open this public hearing, give staff a minute, a brief moment to overview us on this matter.
Thank you, sorry about that. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, nice to be with you this afternoon. Today, you are taking the next two steps in the creation of our newest two public improvement districts. That is Upland Crossing 2 and Upland Crossing 3. You will need to hold a public hearing for creation of both of these districts. You all can take those together separately, however you choose, and then we will ask you to take action on creation resolutions for both districts. What that does is literally exactly what it says, creates the district, sets the boundaries, and assigns the assessment to all the properties inside of those boundaries. We do have a few more steps after today related to actually setting the ordinance and setting the classification for how we will take that or assess those properties. We will take care of those things at future meetings, but today you are holding the public hearings for creation and then also considering creation resolutions. As a reminder, you have a map here of your proposed Upland Crossing 2 PID area. This is south of 34th Street, west of Upland Avenue. And then this is the map for Upland Crossing 3. This is south of 23rd Street, kind of between 23rd and 26th on the east side of Upland Avenue. Both located fairly close to the original Upland Crossing Public Improvement District. As a reminder, at our council meeting on February 14th, you did take action to accept the petitions from the developer for both of these district, districts. And so what that meant is that they qualified for the creation of these districts through the requirements by the state law that you see at the top of this slide. They are the 100% owner of all of the property inside both of those districts, and so they actually qualify in all three categories, but the state requires two. And then we did send out notices of public hearing to all of the owners, which in this case is just the developer, and then it was also published per state law in Avalanche Journal. I have a list here of, should we have anybody in the audience today speaking in opposition or in favor of the creation of the district? These are some of the things that they are able to speak to you all about that you'll want to consider before approving your creation resolutions. As a reminder, both of these districts are being created for long-term maintenance of drainage channels. So Beaton Bow does not anticipate developing any parks or any, what we would consider typical of a public improvement district as far as right-of-way improvements or kind of quality of life improvements. They are strictly creating drainage channels, and so we will have a long-term maintenance contract once the public improvement district is able to take those over. Under nature of services, you'll see several items above and beyond. The drainage channel, the PID, does have the ability in the future, should it have enough revenue to be able to add some of those things? They can, but that is not the developer's intent at this time. For Upland Crossing 2, we do anticipate a five-year, over five years, an expense amount of just under $123,000. That is a five-year total, and we will be assessing each of the properties within that district at 12 cents per $100 valuation. Upland Crossing 3, our five-year expected expenses is very similar, just slightly lower at just under $118,000. They will pay a higher assessment because there are less homes in this district, so these properties will be assessed at 18 cents per $100 valuation. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And just so you're aware, a representative from the developer, our token former staff member, is here to answer any questions that you have.
Honorary.
Honorary, sorry. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Sure.
All right, we'll have you close if we have any other questions. I will now open the public hearing, and if it's with council's approval, since she already talked about agenda item 7.4, which is the creation of Upland Crossing 2, and then 7.4 was the creation of Upland Crossing 3. I'll go ahead and open the public hearings as to both agenda items 7.2 and 7.4. If anyone wishing to speak in opposition to 7.2 or 7.4, you may step forward now. All right, seeing no opposition, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the creation of, or under 7.2 or 7.4, you may step forward now. And as a reminder, you must state your name, your address.
Good. Good af, good afternoon, Mayor and council. For those of you all that don't know me, my name is Wes Everett. I am the representative for Beaton Bow Homes, 6305 82nd Street. And as Brianna did a very excellent presentation, I wanted to also thank her for the effort she's put in for this, and also from Cheryl's staff for this. We, these are maintenance-based PIDs, and the main attribute to that area is the original Upland Crossing PID and park area. We are not requesting any reimbursements from this, and I'm here for any other questions.
Thank you, Wes. All right, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of agenda item 7.2 or 7.4, you may step forward. All right, we'll now close the public hearing as to 7.2 and 7.4. And as a reminder to council, 7.3 and 7.5 are the respective resolutions to authorize the creation and establishment. 7.3 is the creation establishment of Upland Crossing 2, and 7.5 is the creation and establish, establishment of Upland Crossing 3. With that, if no objection from council, I'd move to move 7.2, 7.3, 7.4, and 7.5 into one vote. I'd ask, entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to that effect, Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Massengale. I did. I have a motion. I think it's second from Dr. Wilson. All in favor of approval of, we have a question from Ms. Joy.
I'll call you Mr. Everett.
Yes, ma'am.
You all have done Upland Crossing 1.
Yes, ma'am.
It was a little different than these two, was it not?
Yes, ma'am.
There were more improvements made by the developer.
Yes, ma'am.
In that one. In 2 and 3, there are no improvements being, and when I say that, I'm talking about the things like a park or something like that.
Right.
And I gather, at least in 2, there's some, are there some significant drainage issues in 2 and/or 3?
Both, both areas have a significant drainage channel that will need, we're anticipating a mowing contract for a period of time and some upkeep and maintenance to keep it.
A mowing?
Yes, ma'am.
In other words, it's just, it's not anything you're going to concrete or do anything like that?
No, ma'am.
It's just a natural flow?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Well, PIDs are very popular, and they're used for a lot of purposes. I was a little disappointed there wasn't something kind of fun in there, but I understand the cost that you maintain. And you're going to have to, regardless of the assessment, the number of houses have a lot to do with how much money you can raise.
Yes, ma'am.
On your assessment. So I get that. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Any other questions for Mr. Everett? All right, any other discussion on 7.2 through 7.6? Two, three, four, five, 7.5. All right, all in favor of approval of 7.2, 7.3, 7.4, and 7.5, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, by like sign? Our motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
We will now move to agenda item 7.6. Again, local government code requires a public hearing for the city council to consider the annexation of property. At this time, I will open the public hearing in regard to the annexation of an area of approximately 7.46 acres adjacent to the southern city limits of the city of Lubbock, north of Loop 88 and east of University Avenue. Is there anyone who wishes to speak against this annexation? Or is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this annexation? Welcome back, Mr. Payne.
Mayor, thank you. I do want to announce publicly that you and I are not related, so that people can get that straight in their heads. There's been a lot of noise about that lately, but at least, for my part, I'm saying, to my knowledge, we are not. You may want to echo that.
He kind of sounded proud that he's not related. Did you say that? I'm not related to you.
Well, I'm just, I'm just inviting you to echo that, so people can know that. Thomas Payne, 15309 FM 1730. I apologize, I'm not dressed as I normally am here. I've been on an adventure for the last 24 hours. I suddenly had a partially detached retina yesterday, and I went to the doctor, and, you know, y'all won't insult me like he did. I said, is there a reason this happened? Why does this happen? And he looked at me and he said, too many birthdays. I did not appreciate that. I hope y'all will be more gentle with me than he was.
Basically called you old.
It's not basically, literally, just in a somewhat kinder way. So I'm here representing ARRB. This is an annexation that includes the Hard Corner on University and Loop 88, which has been sold to Toot and Totum, and some additional land to the east of that. I don't really have anything else, other than I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Thank you, Mr. Payne. All right, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the annexation? All right, I will now close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance to annex the property. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Massengale. All right, any discussion? I believe this did carry seven zero in the last vote. All right, no further discussion. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 7.6, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? Our motion carries seven zero. We will next move to Agenda Item 7.7. Again, the local government code requires us to consider, have a public hearing to consider the annexation of property. At this time, I will open the public hearing in regard to the annexation of an area of approximately 185.378 acres. This is adjacent to the western city limits of the city of Lubbock, north of 50th Street and west of Endler Avenue. Is there anyone who wishes to speak against this annexation? You may step forward now. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this annexation, you may step forward now.
Mayor, he of too many birthdays again. I did want to talk about this one just a little bit more. This is a kind of an unusual opportunity from the standpoint that it really is an inside-a-donut hole opportunity to annex some land. I already have the section of land to the southwest of this is already in the city limits, and I already have plans approved to install a 12-inch water main from Alcoa along 50th Street over to that section. So it will be within this piece of land that we're asking to annex now. And it really is a great location and ready to develop as a kind of a water-and-a-half-acre development, which we have almost none of in Friendship School District. So it's an opportunity to, not only to annex some land that's kind of inside the donut hole now, but to annex some land that's, you know, that's going to be developed in short order rather than later on. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this annexation, you may step forward. All right, seeing none, we will now close the public hearing on Agenda Item 7.7. Is there a motion to approve ordinance to annex the property? Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. I have a motion. Is there a second? Any really, really want that second? Thank you, Mr. McBraer. Since you haven't had one today, I'll give you one. Thank you very much for that. All right, any discussion or questions of Mr. Payne or Ms. Sager on 7.7? Ms. Joy?
Mr. Payne, we'll catch you on a bad day.
I'm sorry?
We'll catch you on a bad day.
No, no, it's a good day.
Okay. I voted against this last time because of my concerns about our annexation and how much we've done and how far we've gone in a short period of time and about, you know, the resources that we have or don't have. So I wanted to ask you about, you talked about a water line that you're putting in. Tell me where and where it's going.
So the city of Lubbock has municipal water line, 12-inch line installed today to the corner of 50th Street and Alcoa Avenue. I've already installed pursuant to the approved plans that I talked about, I've already installed the bore and tied on at that corner and crossed Alcoa to the west side. And that's in preparation of extending that line straight west in 50th Street over to FM 179. One thing that changed, I had some plans that were approved to go straight across 50th and cross at the intersection. With the acquisition of this piece of land we're talking about annexing now, I'll actually go to the half-section line and cross over to the north side where I, as I was going to be on the south side. So I'll cross to the north side onto this piece of land. That will let me travel across to FM 179, and at the intersection, I'll be able to turn north and get away from the intersection in order to bore across. That gets me away from a bunch of utilities, shortens the bore, and then I'll come back south on the west side of 179 and cross 50th Street back to that section on the south side. So that will get municipal water service via 12-inch line to this area being annexed now and to that section back to the southwest.
And all those lines are at your expense?
Unless I find volunteers to help. Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Who owns the property immediately to the east?
East of this tract? Ms. Joy, I can't tell you the name of that owner, but that quarter section, that whole quarter section, and you can kind of see it looking at the map, but it's divided in some quite large tracts. So it's already developed. It's just very, very low-density development. And so the likelihood of, well, I don't know if I want to say that or... I can't handicap what the likelihood is that will change, but there's not anything that's going to force that to change unless the owners of that land were to want to do something different. Otherwise, it's going to remain what it is, which is outside the city limits, rural development, very large tracts of land, very low density. So the opportunity, I guess I'll tie into that. The opportunity for development as you move west of Alcoa is this piece of land.
And the property immediately to the north is owned by?
Private owner.
Not by you?
That's correct. So I own Verado, which is to the west.
Right.
And I own the section of land to the southwest, but I don't own land southeast, north, or northeast of the subject tract.
I guess my point is we're going to have some more donut holes, the way you want to look at it.
Well, you have a big donut hole now. This is going to make it smaller.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Mr. Payne? My cousin? My primo? All right, we have a motion and a second on Agenda Item 7.7. All in favor of approval of 7.7, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? Our motion carries seven zero. And with that, it is... It is 2:54, and we are adjourned.